Call to order this August 25th, 2025, Friendswood City Council Special Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Our invocation, Pastor Mike Savranti's of New Hope Church Friendswood Campus is here. Thank you for stepping in because we were kind of searching for somebody that could make it tonight and appreciate you stepping up. So please have at it.
You know, Matthew 6:33 says, "To seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness." And all these things will be added unto you, and that's my prayer today. Father, I thank you for just the city of Friendswood. I thank you for the blessing of being able to live in a community where it's not just safe, but it's friendly, God, and you've really given it your blessing. I strongly feel that, Lord. And I just ask God that as we seek you first, God, that you would give the city council and all the members of Friendswood wisdom to lead well, wisdom to do the right things, to make the right choices, God. We thank you that the Bible tells us, God, any of us who desire wisdom can ask of you, and you generously give it. May you generously give it today. May you just continue to bless the city, bless our leaders. Thank you for the mayor's leadership. Thank you for all the leaders that stand in this room. There's so many good men and women, and I thank you for them. And I pray for the future of Friendswood, God, that you would continue to guide us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you. Is that your pastor, Mariah?
It is.
Good man. He's a good man. I don't like to call on Judge Ellisor every single time because we're going to wear him out, but we always have a backup, I know.
We speak on a daily basis.
I know you do. I know you do. Yes, yes, you're always willing. I appreciate that, sir. Okay. Council comments and reports. Let me jump in here. I had an opportunity along with Councilmember Matranga the other day to go down to Texas City and get a tour of our elections office down there. And boy, you talk about detail-oriented processes. You know, our budget team is pretty detail-oriented, and they check a lot of boxes as they go. But when they count votes down there, you don't have to worry about something being wrong because they must have told us they count each ballot about 10 times in the process, right? I mean, it's going over and over and over again. But thank you, Joe. I think you had something to do with setting that up. And Janice Lowe is one of the election judges, so she set that up for us. And they took care of us down there. Wendy and her team showed us all around. So we know more about that place, except for trying to find it. That was the trickiest part of the whole day. Once you found it, it's in the mall, the maintenance, nondescript building. But anyway, that's what I did on my summer vacation. Councilmember Ellisor.
You know, one of the phenomenons that happens once you become a city council member is constituents began to contact us, neighbors and friends, and say, hey, you're on city council, let me tell you, and then they tell you. So I go to church with a former EMS person. He says, you know, I've noticed around city facilities that they have defibrillators, but they're behind locked doors. So what good does that do? And so I brought that to the attention of the city manager, who brought that to the attention of the right people. And lo and behold, they now have defibrillators that are easily accessible at all city facilities. And I want to congratulate Mr. Cabiri and those that were responsible for that. So we hope that they're not needed, but if they are, they can be reached now. So thank you.
Mayor Protem Ellisor, thank you. Councilmember Branson, do you have any?
Yes. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Hanks. Y'all came to our Region 14 Summer Meeting. It was actually, we got to watch the Space Cowboys, and I think about half the team was the Astros. So that was kind of cool. So that was the summer meeting, which was a lot of fun a couple of weeks ago. And then coming up on Monday, a week from today, we're going to have the Labor Day Ice Cream Social. The city is helping out Rotary Club, Historical Society, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, Friends Downtown, Friends Association, Heritage Gardeners, HEB, Hope Town Bank. I think that's it. Anyway, please come have ice cream with us at Perry Home from 5:00 to 7:00. It is a free event, and it will be Blue Bell Ice Cream. So we're looking forward to seeing everybody there. And that's it. I have nothing tonight.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to recognize Mitchell Blanchard, who works in our Parks and Rec Division. He's primarily out at Lake Friendswood. But I was out there with a friend, and we were riding bikes right by, and the lady flagged us down that there was a baby bird, fledgling bird, that had just kind of tried to leave the nest. And she was very upset of what to do. It was in the sun, it was on the sidewalk. Anyway, Mitchell came to the rescue, helped the baby bird back into the shade, and I suspect by now it is now flying. But I, you know, he didn't know who I was because I was out in my bike-riding gear, but he just jumped in immediately, got involved, tried to put it back in the nest, got the ladder. So anyway, he didn't, he's just the kind of person he is. He just jumped in and helped make it happen. So I just wanted to shout out for that.
Great. We've got great staff. James Tony, you know you've got a good one there. Councilmember Ross.
So Councilmember Ellisor hit on something that I was going to speak on tonight. When he had constituency come and identify an issue, and I was having dinner with Commissioner Juisty the other day, and he said that exact same thing when he was being asked, you know, what is it that the citizens can do to help the county or the city? And the answer is to point out things that you may or may not care for or think need improving or, you know, or a problem. So in that vein, I think the thing that I've heard most since I've been on council is, people are speeding in my neighborhood. So my quick PSA on that is, please, as citizens of Friendswood, be mindful of the speed limits. They are some of the best speed limits in the state. They are very considerate of our younger population and our children. 20 mile-an-hour speed limits in the neighborhood should be obeyed because that gives you ample time to stop if some freezing, a child, an animal, a fledgling bird happens to hop out in front of you, and it'll keep us all safe. So please do not speed. There's nothing more important than getting where you're going safe. You will never want to have our EMS director have to come service you on the side of the road because you've been in an accident. So please, do not speed through our town. It's not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item five, public comment to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. You know, this says we may deliberate. Cannot. Well, that's not what my script says. All right. I may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with the council's rules of decorum. Everyone desiring to present comments should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary at the podium. Each person, Don Johnson, you can start coming up here because I got to read this, but you're the only one that's turned in a card. At the podium, each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record. The rules allow each person three minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. Don Johnson.
Thank you very much. I think I know everybody up here, but I'm Don Johnson. I live on Myrtle Wood. And as a lot of you know, I live right across the creek from where they're digging that big detention basin. And you know, I was very involved in trying to get that project going. My family was very involved. My neighbors were very involved. My friends were very involved. There's a whole lot of people that were just very involved with trying to get that going because they saw that as something that would help lower the water level and help lower flood risk in Friendswood. And of course, you know, we all would like that. Couple of months ago, I became concerned. We were nearing the end of what they call the rough grading cycle, and the trucks were all pulling away. Everything was leaving, and I was like, oh, my gosh, I hope, I hope they don't just quit and this, you know, this is it. And then I was very concerned when I heard some of our drainage district officials making some kind of derogatory comments about that. That's a stinker. That doesn't really do any good. I don't know if we want to go forward with this. And then we had a meeting coming up on August 15th with Harris County Drainage District. And I decided to go on up there and hear what was going on. The four partners were all going to be there. And so I went on up there. I'd sent a note to Rusty the day before and said, hey, I'm driving up there. I didn't know if he would want to ride together or anything, but he never responded. So I went on up there. I saw Mr. Elmer. I saw a lot of the people that I know up at Harris County. I've always had a good relationship with Harris County Flood Control folks. And they started to get into the meeting. We got at least halfway through their presentation, then all of a sudden, the general manager of the Drainage District invited me out into the hallway and said, hey, you can't be here. We didn't invite you. I said, well, I got an invitation. Thank goodness. It was in the email, so I had it documented. But it looked like there was going to be, it would take a confrontation to get back in the room, and I didn't want to do that. I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Elmer's meeting. So I said, you know, we'll straighten this up later. But I'll tell you, driving home, I was just scared to death that somebody was going to throw a kink into the works, and that project was going to, you know, be slowed down or abandoned. Fortunately, when I got home, I found out the three partners with the Drainage District kind of came to some kind of agreement. I haven't seen the final outcome of that, but they came to some kind of agreement, and the project's going to go forward. It's going to kind of be just the bare basic project, 700 acre feet of detention, and I guess my time is up. We're all very lucky that Harris County has joined with us and are doing that project. It'll be a lot of help. And one of these days, I'll come and finish that story about going down Friendswood, and we need more detention basins like that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Appreciate it. All right. Item six, work session topic. Receive an update concerning the 2025 State Legislative Session presented by City Attorney Karen Horner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to do a quick update. I know there's lots of slides, but just I'll run through them really quickly. If you have questions, you can always ask me later. Just again, to show you that the legislature again continues to increase the number of bills, and about 25% of the bills that were introduced dealt with cities this time. Of those that passed, about 20% dealt with cities. So we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, just making sure we're in compliance with everything. As a reminder, council established priorities back in 2024. Part of that included some items that we actually submitted to the TML to include in their legislative program. Those included emergency generators, street maintenance, speed limits, advisory committees, personnel information, notice of zoning map amendments, and relocation assistance. You'll see, two of those actually did get passed. The other ones didn't, and we'll go through those as they come up in my slides. Also, as you recall, you passed two resolutions. One dealing with the subsidence and whether people could be excluded from the subsidence regulations in Harris County. Fortunately, that did not pass or gain any traction. And the other one was the allocation of the tolls going to the City of Houston, and that also didn't pass. So we had some good things happen as well. So really quickly, I'm going to jump through these real quick. So if you have questions, let me know. But House Bill 24 was addressing one of those things that we had asked for TML to support for us. The City of Austin had a case out there that made it really unclear what the notice requirements were for citywide type changes in our zoning ordinance. So they cleared that up. And the bill also includes no protest provisions and also requires posting of designated site signs if there's a new zoning change. It also removes the requirement that to overrule a P&amp;Z decision, it has to take a large majority vote. That we never adopted here in Friendswood, so it's neither here nor there. House Bill 2025 dealt with Platts and what's required to be submitted as far as tax statements. House Bill 2464 dealt with home-based businesses. Basically, it takes, doesn't allow the city to regulate no impact home-based businesses. It does allow us to continue buildings and health and safety type issues. This does not affect short-term rentals, though, so we can still regulate there. House Bill 2559 dealt with development moratorium, established more criteria in order to establish a moratorium. And House Bill 2844 dealt with mobile food vendors regulations. So basically, the state promulgated some restrictions and said that that's what we have to enforce, or that's what could be enforced, and we can't, the city's preempted from adopting something any different than that. House Bill 4163 dealt with ag operations and mowing on the city right-of-way if it's adjacent. House Bill 4506 dealt with electronic zoning change notices, and it allows the city to establish an electronic portal where citizens can submit their information and receive notices via electronic means rather than snail mail. Senate Bill 15, it's not applicable to the city, but it's just one stroke away from being applicable to the city. It's a bracketed bill, meaning it's a population bill, and it basically limits the size or reduces the size of single-family residential properties. And I believe it was in 1999, I think there was some building material requirements that we could no longer enforce. This expands that a little bit in Senate Bill 783. Senate Bill 785 dealt with manufactured homes and says that head code manufactured homes have to be allowed in some residential zoning district in your city. It also provides that you can't require an SGP if you don't require an SGP of other structures in the residential zoning district. Senate Bill 1035 dealt with protection of ag operations and basically waives our immunity from suit, so people can sue us if we try to regulate an area that's nuisance-related in Chapter 251 of the Agricultural Code. Senate Bill 1106 deals with posting of our services assessment plan and pit information. We post that on our website. We also have to share the assessments with the appraisal districts. Senate Bill 1252 and Senate Bill 1202 deal with energy-backed systems. And the big takeaway on this one is it requires cities to allow third parties to be able to review and do inspections. Senate Bill 1883 is dealing with impact fees, and this you will see again because we're going to have to change the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee from being that of P&amp;Z. They've now prohibited that from being P&amp;Z, and they've had certain establishment of what's going to be required as far as professions and different, the components of who has to be on that committee. So we will be bringing that back to you. It also only allows us to increase rates every three years, and it has other provisions dealing with that. Senate Bill 1948 deals with agricultural facility preemptions and basically doesn't allow us to require fire systems in an agricultural, like a pole barn or something of that nature. Single stairways in, at Senate Bill 2835 authorizes certain multifamily units to only have a single stairway if certain requirements are met. House Bill 4753 deals with certificates of occupancy. If you've lost your certificate of occupancy, it allows us to, or requires us to provide a substitute, which can be posted and be treated as original certificate of occupancy. Cottage food production, again, it takes away some city's authority to regulate the cottage food industry and actually prohibits the city from employing a person that tries to regulate that. And Senate Bill 599, regulations of childcare facilities, again, it requires us to comply with the state's standards and doesn't allow us to go beyond that. For public safety and emergencies, we have Senate, House Bill 33, which is Givaldi Strong, which deals with active shooter incidents. So it requires certain training, certain PIO. It requires, allows us to provide for mental health services to first responders who did respond to an active shooter. House Bill 1261 deals with disposition of abandoned properties, which requires us to post or allows us to post on our website and on our social media those properties that have been abandoned, and then to dispose of them after the requisite period of time. House Bill 3595 is dealing with our generators, so it does require, there'd be rules to establish, and those would be applicable to new facilities built after January 1 of 2026. So, and then it also requires everybody to have an emergency preparedness plan and a contingency plan. Public safety, House Bill 5238, disrupting a public meeting is now an offense. That's if it's electronic means and somebody does something cyber-wise to try to disrupt and make the meeting not be, go along. Senate Bill 1261 protects our animal control vehicles. It's a moveover law for animal control facilities. If they're trying to remove a carcass from the roadway, just remember to move over or go back down 20 miles an hour. Also makes it an offense under House Bill 3425 to disclose public servant information, so with the intent to cause injury. In property tax, there's an exemption now for $125,000 for income-producing personal property. That will be on the election, on the ballot in November. If it passes, it'll go into effect in January. It requires, it doesn't require people to then do a rendition if the value is less than the 125 exemption allowed. For property taxes after disaster, it no longer allows us to adopt a property tax rate that exceeds the voter approval rate without holding election. It allows us to adopt certain rates and certain formulas. They have a disaster rate and different rates that we can look at if we are in that situation. For debt service collection rate calculations in Senate Bill 1453, it basically defines the current debt services and doesn't allow us to go over that rate, what the current debt services would be. So it doesn't allow you to retire debt early unless you make a specific motion, and it provides the information that you have to have in that motion in order to pass that rate. Open Meetings Act, we talked about in House Bill 1522. That's the new law that requires us to post our meetings at least three business days before the meeting, so that's four business days before. It's no longer 72 hours. It also requires us to have a taxpayer impact statement with our agendas, and it requires us to post our budget on the webpage so that it's easily accessible to everyone. House Bill 3112 deals with cybersecurity, and it grants an exception for public information dealing with that. And 4214 deals with annual notification to the AG regarding our email address of where you can actually submit public information requests. License plate numbers under House Bill 1883 are no longer required to be redacted if it's in like a body cam. So all the cars that are passing through, our staff used to have to go back through and redact every single license plate that was going through. This does not affect those license plates that are in our incident reports, so those will still be redacted, but just on body cams and things of that nature, they will no longer be redacted. Failure to respond to a PIR, this is, our city secretary's office does a great job. It requires us to notify the requesters. If we don't have responsive documents, we notify them. We already do that. It requires us to, within 10-day days, to actually specify the sections of the act that we're going to say that, why we're not going to release it. Currently, right now, you can say we're doing everything from A to Z. Now we have to actually specify what sections we're doing, so we just have to process things a little quicker. And if the AG finds that somehow we failed to comply with something, it would require not only our PIO, our, to take training, but also city council. So we're going to do our very best not to get you in that situation, so you don't have to take any additional training. Fraud detection equipment is also now going to be exempted from public information. Special right of access under 4310 is what I always thought the case was, that council has the right to the documents of the city if you're asking your official capacity, that those are provided without charge. Additionally, it can require a confidentiality memo or agreement if something's confidential. Senate Bill 1062 deals with digital newspapers and allows publication of notices to be in the digital newspapers if certain requirements are met. And then the tourist telecommunication meetings just allows, tourist meetings be held by telephone conference call if certain conditions are met. Water sewer with municipal rate discrimination, that deals with if you have a nonprofit organization in your city that doesn't pay property taxes, you can't ding them by charging them extra for water sewer. It has to be the same. And for exclusive contracts with solid waste vendors, we will have to post on our website and make certain findings, certain postings in order for that to be valid. Elections is kind of really strange with elections propositions. You know, as a council, you determine what the proposition's going to be each time. If they feel that that's misleading or not facially neutral, it authorizes a person to submit that to the SOS, the Secretary of State, and say, hey, is this kosher? Is this good? The Secretary of State can say yes or no. If it's no, it comes back to the city. The city tries again. City can submit it to the Secretary of State. Secretary of State doesn't still like it, they would then draft a notice of proposition. Even if the Secretary of State drafts that, we can still be sued because of the state, of the Secretary of State's language, so it's kind of a weird bill. And if it's upheld that we didn't do something right, then for four years, we have to submit everything up to the Secretary of State's office. For tax elections, if we're going to have a tax increase or have a new tax, we have to have certain ballot language that says this is a tax increase. The city secretary's office hours and HB 640 deals with instances where Good Friday is right before a May election or something. It no longer requires the city secretary's office to have office hours on a day that the rest of the city is closed. And cancellation of ballot election, it requires us to provide certain information to the comptroller. Likewise, we have to provide certain information also to the AG. There's a disease presumption in personnel, I'm going faster, y'all good? There's a disease presumption, and it removes the requirement that police emergency personnel be engaged in a non-routine activity in order to have that presumption. It also extends the time period. It doesn't require it to be actually on a shift. It requires it to be, it allows it to be eight hours after a shift as well. Severance pay, it limits severance pay to 20 weeks. It prohibits severance payments if employee is terminated for misconduct, and it requires a new severance agreement to be posted on our website. TMRS retirement moved from seven to eight percent. And House Bill 4144 deals with supplemental income benefits. If three years after someone retires and they're found to be, have some sort of cancer or acute myocardial infraction or stroke, there's still some requirements for the city to assist in providing supplemental income benefits. For purchasing, lobbying procurement is no longer going to be considered a professional services that we don't have to go out for bid or proposals for. If we were to do that, we would have to go out for proposals. The competitive bid requirement in Senate Bill 1173 moved the threshold from 50,000 up to 100,000. And House Bill 103 deals with tax bonds and database that that's supposed to have with the comptroller and the city and the attorney general. And then municipal court fees were combined. For finance, we have artificial intelligence, purchasing finance, artificial intelligence basically requires if we use artificial intelligence, we have to announce that we're using it prior to its use. It doesn't allow us to capture certain information and requires all of us to, the Texas Artificial Intelligence Council to conduct training programs for the city. And then the next one, House Bill 3512, will require all of us to do that kind of training when we do our cybersecurity training, so there'll be additional training for everyone this year. City construction contracts, it just provides when the payment act requires us to make payments. It doesn't allow us to withhold payments during a period of time that we're doing an audit. Construction liability, it basically tells us the accrual date of when we can, when we can file suit, that period of time. Land survey indemnity has been changed so that it's the same as it is for, what we can require is the same as what we can require for engineers and architects. House Bill 3611 deals with civil penalties for unauthorized signs and prescribes a kind of ratcheting up system if there's unlawful signs. Municipal court, there's a motorcycle safety course that allows much of the motorcycle safety be done electronically, so they would just email and everything would be through that means. Code enforcement allows the cities to have a civil municipal court, basically that could handle same things as substandard structures under 54 to 14 of the Local Government Code. And then municipal court interpreters requires interpreters if it's requested or if it's by the, a party or requested by the court. So first special session began on the 31st, it had about 17 items on it. Some of those dealing with the cities did have impact fees, emergency preparedness, and things of that nature. But of course, it was stopped. The House, Senate basically passed everything in the House to not, and so the first session adjourned on the 6:15. But have no fear, they started right back up on the same day, and there's about 22 items on there. There's been some added dealing with camp safety and things of that nature, really, most of which don't apply to the city. So we are still looking at different bills that are coming out. There's bills that are getting traction, some that aren't, that last two have traction, have had traction even today. And so we're just watching everything, and we'll keep you apprised of anything that goes on. And that's all I have. I told you I'd be fast.
Good job. Thanks, Karen. Yeah. Yeah. All right. All right. Item seven, municipal budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Let me see here. It is now 5:58. I call to order this public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 municipal budget for the city of Friendswood. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding the proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 municipal budget for the city of Friendswood. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comment card in the foyer and submitted it to the city secretary at the podium. Each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record of this hearing. Rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd like to request that Rhonda, give us a brief overview.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My plan is to just give you a high-level overview of the budget and just focus on the changes from the presentation that I did on August 4. So we'll get started. And as always, we'll start with the vision statement. Just a reminder, that vision statement was adopted by council on July 1, 2024. Here are our key budget drivers. We've discussed these numerous times throughout the budget. We've discussed these numerous times throughout the budget process. And then here we have the changes that have been made to the budget since August fourth. We were able to lower the proposed tax rate about a little over a penny from fifty-two point sixty-seven cents to fifty-one point forty-two cents. That is the current tax rate, meaning that that was the tax rate for tax year twenty twenty-four. Revenues in the general fund are forty-five point nine million. There's been a net increase of about thirty thousand. Property, there was a decrease in property tax revenue of seven hundred and eighteen thousand as a result of lowering the rate. Sales tax revenue increased two hundred and forty-eight thousand. And we were able to do that just by looking at our allocation that came in for June and realizing that we could go ahead and increase the sales tax. And then the use of unassigned fund balance, we're going to go ahead and fund the deferred maintenance this year with unassigned fund balance rather than through the property tax rate. Then expenditures in the general fund increased thirty thousand dollars. And that's a result of including the D.P. for the social media post boost. And then because we increased sales tax in the general fund, we also increased sales tax in the street maintenance fund and in the F.D.E.D.C. fund. So on this slide, total proposed revenue is a hundred and sixteen point eight million. And in red, you can see the changes that we just discussed. And this is offense, that this isn't just the general fund and the water and sewer fund. So you can see the sales tax change and the property tax and then the use of fund balance in red. And then here you can see again that we reduced the property tax rate by a little over a penny to the fifty-one point forty-two cents. The no new revenue rate is fifty point one two cents. And then the voter approval rate with the unused increment rate is fifty-six point seven two cents. So the new proposed tax rate is about one point three cents above the no new revenue rate. And then we have, here we have our tax bill comparison. And we took a home valued at four hundred and sixty thousand. And we took the homestead exemption that the city of Friendswood allows. And we compared that tax rate with the annual, what it would be on that taxpayers' annual bill. We compared the current rate to the no new revenue rate. And so with this current proposed tax rate, a taxpayer would pay about forty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents more annually, which is about three dollars and ninety-nine cents a month. Total proposed expenditures for all funds is one hundred and sixteen point eight million. And the only change here we had was in the general government function, the thirty-three, the thirty thousand for the social media post. And then we'll move on to the general fund. And some of this is going to be repetitive because most of the changes were in the general fund. So the total proposed revenue in the general fund is forty-five point nine million. And again, we had those changes related to property tax revenue, the decrease of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then the increase in the sales tax revenue of two hundred and forty-seven thousand. And then the deferred maintenance, funding that with the use of fund balance of five hundred thousand. So proposed expenditures in the general fund are estimated at forty-five point nine million. And the only change we've had here since August fourth was the additional thirty thirty thousand in the communications department for the social media boost post. Okay, this is a list of the forces at work that are funded in the budget that totaled four hundred and ninety thousand. And we've talked about these throughout the process as well. And then on the next slide, we have the decision packages, which totaled two point eight million. And then the last slide is the decision package that originally that we didn't have funded, that we are funding now, the thirty thousand. Okay, we'll move on to the water and sewer fund. Total proposed revenue in the water and sewer fund is twenty-three point five million. About twenty-two point six million are related to utility fees, water and sewer revenue. Proposed expenses are twenty-three point five million in the water sewer fund. And this slide just breaks it down by department. And then here are the lists, this is the list of forces at work in the water and sewer fund, which totaled two point four million. And then the funded decision packages included in the budget totaling three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That was kind of a quick overview. Do you have any questions?
I was just going to make a statement is that, you know, you went through that relatively fast. You got a lot of data. But this is, you know, we've got this budget at the end of July, is that correct? If I remember that correctly?
Yes, sir.
And we've had two workshops and many, many meetings with between staff and council, individual council members. So some of the changes you've seen are because of those meetings that we've had and workshops that we have. So those, if you think we went through it, you know, this is, we've gone through it multiple times. So this is towards the the end of these discussions.
Hopefully, Councilmember Ross, did you have a statement?
Okay, I'm on. Just because I missed the last workshop, could you tell me about the social media post boost? I think I remember some discussion about it in the first workshop, but.
So that was a submitted decision package that was requested by a council member to help boost our social media to get communication out to the public.
So it's effectively a pay-for-play to to boost those.
Correct. It will increase visibility on posts, especially those that are deemed of emergency nature so that we make sure that we get greater responses and viewership by those that are signed up and others in the community. Now, it doesn't mean that the full thirty thousand will be spent. So it just, because you don't want to oversaturate the public with too much information because after a while, they'll start ignoring it. So it's just used, a pot of fun to be used to boost certain posts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think a good example, when you say it's going to be less than thirty thousand, most likely we boosted a comment or a posting not too long ago. And we spent maybe fifteen or twenty dollars to boost it. I mean, it's it's not a lot of money, but it gets it broader reach. And don't ask me how social media works, it's magic, but.
So our last slide, our next steps, we're almost there. We're almost to the finish line. So tonight, we're having our our hearing on the budget. And afterwards, you can either adopt the budget or you can choose to postpone the adoption to the next council meeting. And then at the next council meeting in September, we'll have the public hearing on the tax rate. And then hopefully, we'll get the tax rate adopted that night.
Thanks, Rhonda. I don't have any cards. Was there anyone in the room that intended to speak about the budget in this public hearing that didn't know to fill out a card? Okay, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing and move on to item seven B. Seven B, discuss and take action concerning the city of Friendswood's proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six municipal budget. Before we make a motion on this item, I'd like to ask you, Murad, give us a quick overview of what our options are tonight.
Yes, sir. As Rhonda alluded to, you have the opportunity to vote on the budget this evening. Obviously, we can't adopt the the tax rate until September eighth after the public hearing. Since we haven't gotten a lot of feedback from y'all, I'm comfortable moving forward with the budget if council is so inclined. I just caution you when we adopt it that we need the corresponding tax rate to support it. So this evening's vote is obviously important, but so is the one on September eighth.
Thank you. All right, I I'll just say I'm ready to approve this budget. So any comments on that? I entertain a motion.
I have a motion.
Mayor Protem Alisor.
I move that the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six be adopted as revised and presented, including revenue projections of a hundred and sixteen million, eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine, and expenditure appropriations totaling a hundred and sixteen million, eight hundred and ten dollars and eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine.
I'll second.
Motion is in a second. Any discussion?
I just want to mention one little discussion. I want to thank Rhonda and the staff for working with us on this. One of the things that I had brought forward is if we could recognize sales tax more than we have in the past and reduce what our ad valorem taxes we charge each resident. And they went back and looked at it. And they were able to lower it just over a penny on our ad valorem taxes and recognize that we're probably going to bring in more money on sales taxes. Well, it's easy for a municipality to bet on the for sure thing. And it's a lot harder for a municipality to put the money on the come line and say, let's hope and pray that our commercial properties bring in the revenue that we're asking that this budget is asking it to do. And I want to thank them for for stepping up and saying, I think that we're going to bring in this revenue through sales taxes. And we're going to be able to lower the amount that we charge in ad valorem taxes to each of our residents. So in that regard, I want to thank you, Mo, thank you, Rhonda, Katina, the whole staff for for looking at that for the whole, for the whole council. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is a great statement, Robert. I know in our last meeting, I think in the library, we discussed this. And you had a great comment. You you said exactly what you just said.
Try to recognize.
Try to recognize that, hey, our our sales tax are are outpacing what we predict, which is a good thing. It's great to predict a conservative number, but hey, we're continually beating that number. So the rest will all sleep well. The city manager may lose some sleep over this because he'll be waiting, waiting for the sales tax numbers to come in. But don't worry, you know, everything is going great. It's going to work out and this balanced budget is going to be perfect.
Shop local.
Yeah, shop local. If you don't live in Friendswood, stop somewhere on your way home and buy something, please.
Better yet, it's your friends from League City.
Be sure you frequent.
Yes.
One additional thing, I guess I didn't have a comment.
Please.
Okay, and that is just for the audience and those that might be watching this at some later date, is that, you know, the original budget was a little bit higher, as you heard during Rhonda's explanation. But through everybody working together, continuing to sharpen our, the pencils, looking for other opportunities like like Robert mentioned on sales tax, we're we're able to get the tax rate to be the same as it's been in this current budget that cycle that we're in. So I think that my hat's off to everybody that was involved in getting us there. I think that's well appreciated by all the residents in Friendswood.
Just remember, we kept the tax rate the same. If your appraisal goes up, you need to take that argument to the appraisal district and say, hey, cities try to keep our taxes flat and you guys are raising my appraisal. So, you know, it's a multiplier. But all right, I have a motion from Mayor Protem Alisor, second from Councilmember Hanks. All in favor? Opposed? Got a six to one. Motion passes. All right, item seven C, consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the city of Friendswood's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Anything additional on this, Murad?
No, as you put, the comment about appraisals, the no new revenue rate is fifty point one oh, fifty point one one two cents. So this tax rate, fifty-one, is above the no new revenue rate. So that's why this action is required.
Got you. State law. All right, any, I get a motion, I need a motion.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any comments on this item?
So just quickly, to give you my perspective, I ran on a no net revenue platform. So I I can't step out there in 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 good conscience with the constituency, vote for a tax increase or a revenue increase effectively in this case with, based on taxes. However, the staff has done a wonderful job. I've learned so much more about city budgeting than I ever comprehended that you could know as a citizen that doesn't understand how these things work. So to that extent, I guess I would say, you know, get in there and go to, get involved and start getting into the budgets and understand how these things are generated. So the staff has done a wonderful job. I think they they looked at all the items that you could cut. The forces at work are the things that, you know, are really difficult to overcome. And some of those things have crept up this year. And so those are the things that, you know, we need to look forecasting for if at all possible. My my pet peeve is the fire trucks, even though that's a small portion of our total forces at work on ladder trucks. But we try to figure out ways to reduce these big-ticket item expenditures that I think, let's just say, private equity firms and other forces at work are driving the cost up and the city's having to pay for them. So I really look forward to working with, you know, legislators and other people to do those things and just let's find a way next year to keep driving it down. So thank you all for your efforts. It's tremendous amount of work.
Mayor, just briefly as a comment, since Councilmember Ross, you weren't, you weren't at the August thirteenth workshop. Between forces at work and our increase in debt service, it's nearly a million dollars added to the budget that we could not contend with. Those are contractual obligations.
Forces at work for the audience?
Forces at work are things that are contractually obligated either to prior action of city council, long-term contracts in place with the volunteer fire department, for instance. Or we agree to purchase a new fire truck that's two point four million. But when we add the additional accessories that are needed to comply with our equipment, you're still looking at a two point seven, two point eight million dollar fire truck. Those aren't things that we can fund out of our operating budget in one given year. Obviously, we we can't tell the fire department, we don't want a fire truck because otherwise, then we're not able to respond to nine-one-one calls. We are subject to the market, so when we go out and procure things, we're limited to what's out there. So obviously, I understand your concern and it's it's well, well-placed. But we have somewhat limitations to what we can do from a funding standpoint.
Yeah, and to my extent, I'm just looking long-term. This isn't going away. So as we look forward, there are going to be more ambulance, more fire trucks, more things. And I think the state and the cities need to work together to address that because I think the sourcing of those resources has become very limited in the United States of America. What an odd thing to say.
It is.
So.
Well, I appreciate your comments, too. I wish, in some ways, I wish we lived in a city like League City, Pearland, that is just exploding in growth.
Yes.
And we could go with a no new revenue rate and we could.
Look like heroes every day.
Look like heroes, lower our budget and make enough money off of new growth. But we don't have that much new growth. So the taxes that our new houses are paying are bulking up our our revenues high enough to counter these expenses. So I I get where you're coming from and yes, understand. You got to stick with your your voters there and do what you said you were going to do. I understand. So I do have a motion in a second on this ratifying. Motion from Councilmember Raffan, second from Councilmember Hanks. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda items eight A through eight L.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? All right, pass seven to nothing. And we are adjourned, there being no further items.